All right, good evening everyone.
Good evening.
This is the August 20th City Council Workshop. I'm Mayor PJ Connelly, I'll be the moderator. Call on the city clerk for the role.
Mayor Connelly?
Here.
Mayor Pro templother. Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Bell?
Here.
Councilmember Smiley?
Here.
Councilmember Litchfield?
Russell?
Councilmember Meyerhopper?
Here.
Mayor Connelly, we have four.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to the approval of the agenda. Can you make adjustments? Does anybody want to make?
So if I can make a suggestion and ask that the council consider adding to the agenda a discussion of the industrial site assessment.
Would you like the exact language?
I would just say that the board has the authority to add something to the agenda and you just need to have a two-thirds vote of the council, so.
So, no pressure, but we need four votes.
I had a motion second.
All right, motions were made by councilmember Bell, second by councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ooh, you just made it. Item's approved. So, I'll pass it over to the city manager for an introduction.
Right, thank you. Mayor, today we are joined today by Crystal Morpheus. Crystal is with Creative Consulting. The city employs, back in January when we held your council retreat, one of your top goals was to identify possible sites for industrial economic development in our community. So several months ago, the city employed Creative Consulting and Crystal to do some site assessment for us, and Crystal is here to provide that presentation to the council today. And I'll turn it over to Crystal.
Glad to be with you again. The Greenville again, I've done some different economic developments over the years. The last time, it was probably when Carl Reese was here, and we did a sort of a strategic plan for the city, but that's been several years ago. So I'm glad to be here talking about industrial sites, which was something that we talked about several years ago, so it's nice to see there's finally some movement in that area. I'll lead off by saying that this study was co-sponsored by the Utilities Commission and also by Electric Cities of North Carolina. And so thank Brenda Daniels, Carl Reese, and her staff, the next time you see them as well, for participating. I'd like to also thank Christian Lockamy. Staff really strongly supported this study and gave us some baseline information and was very helpful, so I'd like to thank him up front. I'm going to talk about the process and then the sites that we looked at, and then give you some recommendations and steps forward. So we did review 15 sites. We looked at sites that had a range of acreage and different access points and utilities. We assessed those sites using different methodologies. We did a geographic information system review, which we looked at wetlands and many other things I'll talk to you about, but that was a desktop review. I actually visited each site with your city staff, so boots on the ground, looking at curb appeal and marketability and access points. We also used our own internal site assessment tool, which gives a score and ranking to each site. We've identified some priority sites for development, and then some that would have maybe development potential down the road when some things change, so I'll talk about those. So the things that we looked at, I mentioned accessibility, so how would truck traffic or business traffic and employee traffic enter and exit through the site? Surrounding land use, is it compatible with commercial or industrial development? Overall marketability? Curb appeal, if you're a businessperson looking at this site, would you find it appealing? We also looked at technical aspects like floodplain zoning, whether the zoning was already appropriate, or there was zoning adjacent to it that would make this appropriate in the future. The topography, location of water bodies, so for example like wetlands issues, watershed issues, how many owners there are, it's easier to deal with one owner versus 20 owners, so we looked at that, and some other factors as well. This is a general map that shows the location of the 15 sites that we analyzed, and you can see they range in acreage from about, you know, 78 or smaller sites, 78 acres, up to almost 10,000 acres, so there's a wide range of acreage. One of the things you'll note are several of these are outside of the city. When we look at potential industrial property within the city, limits is actually pretty small. And so there are some opportunities for city-county partnership for industrial development, and there are some really good models across North Carolina and other states where multiple units of local government come together to jointly develop industrial property, and I'll talk about that particularly with the priority site. But just note that we were not confined to the city, and so we looked around the area. Primarily access points was a good starting point. So, the first site, top priority site, is site number two, and it's about 300 acres. The reason this was our top priority site was that where infrastructure was already on-site, with the exception of wastewater, which is really only a tenth of a mile away, which is pretty close. It has good access to the highway system, and it has industry already in the area, so we looked at compatible land use, there's already industry in the area. And you know it's easier to sell the second, third, and fourth home in a residential development than the first home, this is a similar thing, industry already sees that this is an area that can be developed. It's also a good candidate for what's called a multi-jurisdictional or tax revenue sharing park. In North Carolina, we call them multi-jurisdictional park. It's where multiple units of local government come together to jointly share in the development of a park. I'll give you one example, in Burke County, North Carolina, all the municipalities in the county are jointly developing an industrial park on Interstate 40, so the proportion of investment of the local government is the proportion of the tax revenue that's shared out of it. So for example, if the city is a 30% investor in the park, they would receive 30% of the tax revenue out of it. And there are four or five multi-jurisdictional parks across North Carolina, multiple counties, multiple cities, and then city-counties. So this would be a potential candidate for that, with it being in the recognized industrial area. We do recommend for this an extension of the wastewater, since it's only one-tenth of a mile. If you are a site-location consultant or a company considering this property, you want all utilities on-site, and getting it just that one-tenth of a mile would make it more marketable. The second priority site is site number three, at about 90 acres. We believe this is a priority site because it has an easy access area. It's close to site two, so it's in an area that already has commercial and industrial development, so there's compatibility in that area. All utilities are already on-site, and it's very close to a four-lane access point. So with utilities and infrastructure transportation in place, and being in an area of already having commercial and industrial development, it ranked high for us. The next sites actually are together, I'll sort of flip 12 and 13. We grouped them together because you can see they're on opposite sides of the future southwest bypass. So we believe combining sites 12 and 13 into one industrial area that will have visibility from the bypass would be a good, would make it a high priority for the city. It does have some potential possibly for rail service in the area, but particularly site 13 may have some wetlands issues, so we do recommend a wetlands identification to confirm whether the suspect wetlands are there, what's the extent of it, and if you combined it with site 12, we believe there's enough developable land there to make it worthwhile. But these sites, if you notice, water and sewer and gas and electric are all on-site for 13. 12 is next to it, so those extensions could go right over to site 12, and it's right off the highway. Also, site 13 is in an area that already has existing commercial development, so adjacent land use is already appropriate for industrial and commercial development. And then site four was our fourth priority site. It is a small site, but it is in there, a commercial area. This may be best for a single user, but again, all utilities are on-site, it's near the four-lane highway, and we would also recommend a wetlands identification for this, just to make sure there are no wetlands on the area. But where the others could be larger business park areas, we believe this one would maybe best used for a single, may best be for a single user. So that was really five, really four priority sites we combined two, so that was five out of the 15. So the remaining 10, we grouped in either low development, moderate development, or high development potential. The low development ones, when we talk about those, really they're far from infrastructure, and usually they have a lot of residential development around it, so you would not want truck traffic and a lot of employee traffic going by residential neighborhoods. Moderate development means that there could be some extension of infrastructure, but it's kind of far from infrastructure. High development potential really just means in the long term, as some highways are improved and infrastructure extended, there could be some long-term high potential for development. So site one was our largest site, at almost 10,000 acres. Water is on-site, but wastewater is not available. This is one I would watch in the future because it is so very large, it could have potential. But there needs to be some improvements on 43 and 33, and also some developments of wastewater. So for example, it's about a $1 million cost for GUC to serve, which is large, but as services continue to expand and the highways are improved, I would keep my eye on this one for the future, because it is, again, 10,000 acres, very large, could be a mega-site in the future, but you just need to watch transportation, infrastructure enhancements. Site number five, at about 1,000 acres, we believe is more suited for residential development. It has several residential areas around it. Truck traffic would have to pass a lot of these neighborhoods, and really, we don't recommend that for either commercial or industrial development. Same thing with site number six, its highest potential is residential development, even though most services are there on-site. The truck access would again be close to existing residential neighborhoods, and really on small residential roads, these are not industrial access roads. Site number seven, we have some uncertainty about ownership plans for this site. There's already a structure on the site, and until those ownership plans are clarified, we would take this out of consideration, and also water service is uncertain. Site number eight, water and wastewater services are not available. The Utilities Commission does not serve that site, and the access roads were not up to standard, so we recommend not pursuing it. It's in a very remote rural area as well. Sites nine and 10, we combined, they were adjacent to one another, there is some low-lying area there. We included them initially because there is rail in the area, and it is close to the future interstate, but the water and sewer is not available, it's not served by GUC, and so we considered taking that out unless something changed with utilities in the future. Site number 11, again, very similar, wastewater and water service not available, it's not served by GUC, and again, with future utilities are feasible, that may be one to circle back to because of rail. Site 14.
You keep specifying it's not served by GUC, or the, do some of the others sewer plant sewer areas have, just don't really have industrial level capacity, or is it just a?
They just, for example, Bell Arthur does not have any sewer service in the area, so there would be ways to extend it to the sewer service.
The fact that it's not a GUC area necessarily a bar?
No, no, if there was other service to it, it would be considered. There's just no service available to it right now. Yes. So site 14 has all the utilities, but it's really, it's sort of boxed in by residential and retail development around it, so put in an industrial or heavy commercial use in there, would not be compatible with the retail use and residential use that's in the area, so we discounted that as well. And the 15th one, which looked good initially on the map when we got there, it is an active farm, it is a productive commercial farming operation, so we discounted that since it is an active business. So to summarize, the top recommended sites, site number two, three, then combining 12 and 13, and site four, you'll see, again to summarize those, the first one and the second one, sites two and three, are close to industrial areas and really could just be expanding an existing industrial area. Sites 12 and 13 are on either side of the bypass, and that's our recommendation because of access, existing commercial area, and then site number four has existing commercial development. So what we recommend as next steps, the first step really costs the city no money, which is to confirm sales price and availability. We have not spoken with any landowner of these properties, again, it's just a GIS review, so talking with landowners to confirm availability, to confirm sales price. Then you can start marketing those sites through the state economic development partnership at no charge. So that's really step one, with no dollars expended, and can put some sites out there for the city that's being actively marketed. The next, yes?
So some of these properties, or are all of these properties on the market, or some are, some are not?
Some are and some are not. Yes, yes. And then the third step, controlling property through some level of option agreement. Typically, we do not recommend that local governments buy property until you go through an option process and evaluation, so optioning would be a first step. Then after that, to inventory the due diligence that has been done. So for example, is there a Phase 1, is there a geotechnical study, has there been a wetland study done? Inventoring that, and then completing the due diligence on those sites, which would include a site plan, that would tell you how much it's going to cost to develop the sites. This inventorying and completion of due diligence can range anywhere from $20,000 to $30,000 per site, so you can start budgeting that money in addition to the option. And once you have the option, and you've completed all the due diligence, you can apply for North Carolina site certification, which is a marketing advantage to the sites. And then you would start different development steps. So for example, pursuing a multi-jurisdictional park on site number two would be a next step, looking, finding a development partner for a public-private partnership on a spec building development is another option, and starting to prepare those sites, for example, putting in entranceways, signage, and other features.
See that same certification process you talked about, that if somebody already has site control themselves and did the development plan, then they could do certification?
They could.
That has to be a public entity.
It does not have to be a public entity. If you have a landowner that is unwilling to do that on their own, there are examples in North Carolina of a partnership for that due diligence. So for example, in the past, Catawba County has done the, has sort of provided a zero-interest loan, if you will, to the private entity to do that due diligence, and then when the land's sold, the money is paid back. So there's some different ways to encourage private owners to complete the due diligence. So if you have a piece of property, a site-selection consultant or a business prospect is only going to consider that property if it's been assessed in some way, so either encourage a private person to do that, or through a partnership, or through option, you can do it. So questions on any of the sites or next steps?
Well, as far as like, you know, when we do make a decision moving forward, you know, I would recommend, of course, that we would consult with a broker, you know, and discuss as far as prices and whatnot. What have you seen in other municipalities as far as, you know, extend or the length of an option? How long have you seen that property owners are willing to put an option on the property? Or is there anything as far as like a right of first refusal?
Yes, you could do a right of first refusal for like the North Carolina site certification program. It's either a two- or three-year option agreement, I think it's a three-year option agreement, so I'd suggest you would start with that. And what the option agreement would do is just tie it up so that if the property owner's not willing to do the due diligence, you can go through the due diligence process before you make any further investments. You may have property owners that are willing to be partners with you. So for example, there are cases in North Carolina where you partner with the private entity, maybe you do some due diligence on the property, maybe you do some enhancements on the property, and then you pay them at a later date on an acreage release basis like you would in residential development. So if any, if you can work a partnership so that your money is not invested in the purchase price, your money is invested in enhancements through a partnership with the landowner, that's best. Oftentimes, local governments will dive headfirst into purchasing property when that sinks all your money into purchase and not into enhancements. And you really need more than just a greenfield site to be competitive. For example, with spec building, shell building or spec building development, oftentimes it's a public-private partnership. I've seen agreements where the city owns the property, the county does the grading and the enhancements to the property, the private developer builds a building, and then if the local government may even guarantee an interest carry for a period of time, for example, or even a buyout after so many years. Catawba County, again, I mentioned the early example, they've got a really good public-private partnership model for their spec building program. They've just recently sold one and built another one, and I think they're about ready to sell the second one too. So that would be a good example, agreement of how to work with a private developer on spec buildings.
As far as being like an NC certified site, does it need to be in government hands? Can it be advertised?
A North Carolina certified site can have an option, it does not have to be government-owned. You just have to have an agreement with the landowner.
What's the timeframe on a NC certified site?
If you can move quickly, maybe four, five, six months on that, it depends, there's a set schedule for review of certification, and if you have, for example, if one of these sites already has a lot of the due diligence done recently, it may move the process along faster.
So do you develop a site, and then it's certified, or are there steps essentially as you progress through the development of the site? You pass NC certification one, and then you can move to the next step of development, and then you pass two, and then before it's fully certified, or is it just a one-time, one-shot review and you're certified?
One-shot review and you're certified. So site certification really contains two categories of information. One are technical assessments, which are things like an environmental Phase 1, a geotechnical study, a site plan, a development cost estimate, technical things. Then there's what I call administrative, which are documents of ownership, documents of deed, easements, and other administrative documents. You present all that in a package to the Department of Commerce, and then the site is then certified. It's really a way to market the property. It tells prospective companies and site-location consultants that a body of due diligence has been performed on this site. Even if you're not going to certify the site, you still need to perform that body of due diligence to answer questions about risk of the site. But once you've invested all of that money in the due diligence process anyway, really the incremental cost to have it certified is minimal, so you might as well go ahead and have it certified as a marketing advantage.
How about the, so for number two, it's 303 acres, do you get all 303 acres certified, or can you get 100 of the 300 acres certified?
I'd suggest you go ahead and get all 300. You can certify a site as a standalone or as a business park, and I would suggest you certify as a business park. It's much easier than to go back and do it individually.
And in your experience, is that why, one of the reasons why number two was favored, just because of the size versus force? Number two's 303 acres, number four's 90 acres?
Let me go back to, I'll just go back to this map. Number two was the favored site because it's closest to existing industrial development, and that's why it was number one. And number three is very close to that industrial development as well, and companies want to know that, they want to find indicators that lower their risk, and to see that other companies have developed property, transportation access points are in place, it gives them an indication that their risk is lower there than in other places.
And for 12 and 13, are they already zoned for industrial, or do, will we have to go through the zoning process over there? Maybe not be for you, but anybody else in the room?
It is in my report, I'm trying to remember.
Number 13 is already zoned for industrial. Number four, or excuse me, number 13 is, yeah, number 12, that is, that's actually outside of the city's ETJ, so we don't have zone authority, but I believe that the future land use plan calls for industrial.
For the county.
Well, for the city land use plan, our land use plan boundaries actually extend beyond the ETJ.
I guess in your experience, for a county of our size, roughly what, 200,000 people, how many North Carolina certified sites should we probably have?
As many as you can have.
More than zero.
More than zero. I would say that, so you have, as a county, some industrial property left in Indigreen Corporate Park, for example, but you need to start as a county planning for that next larger business park, corporate park expansion. And then beyond that, what is a future next expansion as well? And have some different options. So for example, we've got a couple of small sites in here, and then some large sites that could be a standalone versus a business park setting. But having a mix of what we call product or inventory, as well as different stages. So Indigreen is developed, there are a few lots left, this would be a new business park development, and even looking forward to that, what's the next step? Because it takes years really to develop and then build out a park, as you've seen with.
And I guess the reason I say that too, is that's kind of the importance of us working with a county, to assist us with, you know, we're not trying to do this on our own, the more sites that we have, and we can't do it on our own because of cost barriers, and we don't want to put options on all the pieces of property, so it's going to be important that we're able to work with the county in the future, and, you know, potentially get as many sites as we possibly can.
And look beyond the county, there are examples, again, in North Carolina, of multiple cities in the county coming together. So even in your own county, it's more efficient to have, it's less efficient to have every town trying to create a business park with very limited resources, because then you end up with multiple inferior products. Then when you come together and invest your resources in maybe a few, a couple of business parks, but you've invested your resources to a much higher quality product, and that's what multi-jurisdictional parks will do for you, is a higher quality product. Also, it makes better land use plan, rather than 10 towns having business parks, maybe where they don't make sense for infrastructure or transportation, the 10 towns will come together with the city and the county, for example, and invest in a park that where infrastructure is and transportation is, so it makes better land use sense as well, it's more efficient for land use. So the county's a good partner, but you may look to some towns as well to be investors. In Burke County, all the municipalities in the county are investors in that business park. Huntersville, Cornelius, and Davidson are the three towns that invested in Commerce Station. Brunswick and Columbus Counties are joint investors in a park. And then there's Triangle North, which is Vance, Franklin, Warren, and Granville Counties. And there's one more, Towns County, Georgia, and Clay County, North Carolina, as a multi-state, multi-county park development.
Just to confirm, I'm sure they are, but two and three are completely clear of the floodplain?
Let's find my map on two and three. If they are not clear floodplain, the floodplain did not impact, okay, site two is completely clear of floodplain, and site three has a little bit of floodplain on one of the tracks, but it's on a very kind of southwestern border that would not impact the major.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions?
So I would encourage you to take the first step, which is no cost, which is confirm sales price availability, and start marketing the sites, because you can market private sites on the state system, which gets an inventory for Greenville and Pitt County, gets an inventory marketed, and then to move forward with the next step, which is potentially optioning of the top priority sites, two and three, for example, and inventorying and moving forward with their due diligence. And then after that, working on public-private partnerships for development. And again, we can supply staff with some good examples from other communities of development agreements for public-private partnerships. Okay? Good, thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thanks for the presentation.
Do you want to stop by the county, and other municipalities, do this same presentation?
Well, you know, you have other cities, towns in the county that are Electric Cities members, and Electric Cities has been updating economic development plans for cities. So I know, for example, Aiden has a current economic development plan, which does call for business site development, so it would be a good idea for Greenville to reach out to Aiden and other cities around to think about partnerships. It just makes a lot of sense, again, in terms of efficient use of resources, as well as land use planning, transportation planning. It makes a lot of sense to think about partnering with people, with your neighbors, for tax revenue sharing. Not everybody can develop a Class A business park, but together, you can develop a Class A business park.
I think it's worth noting too, that we were awarded $250,000 jointly with the county. And it kind of represents, like you said, all the other municipalities, so this might be a good opening for us to work with the county and utilize those funds that were awarded by our legislature.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Members of council, we have another item. I recommend that council adopt the following motion, holding a closed session for the following reasons. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11a1, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to the law of this state or the United States, or not considered a public record within the meaning of Chapter 132 of the General Statutes, said law, bringing the information as privileged or confidential being the open meetings law. That's the first ground to go into closed session. Second ground is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute, Section 143-318.11a3, to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body, in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, including consultation relating to the lawsuit entitled Murray Sue Vitavas Planiff versus City of Greenville, Pitt County Board of Education, Josh Stein in his capacity as Attorney General of the State of North Carolina, Phil Berger in his capacity as President Pro tempore of the Senate, and Tim Moore in his capacity as Speaker of the House of Representative Representatives. Those are two motions, closed session.
Motion to go into closed session?
Second, okay.
Second, there we go, all together.
Who made the motion? Okay, motion was made by Councilmember Meyerhopper, seconded by Councilmember Smiley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? As heaven. We are in close. We are in closed session.